This hearing, as required under Indiana Code, is for the purpose of providing taxpayers the opportunity to make recommendations to the department that administer the tax laws in our state. This hearing is not a news conference or a media opportunity, nor is it a forum to debate Indiana tax laws. Those are established by the Indiana General Assembly, right across the street. This is an opportunity for the public to suggest improvements in tax services and processing. We are always looking to improve our services to the taxpayer, and we are very interested in hearing your ideas and suggestions. If you wish to make a statement, please provide me with your name if you have not already done so, and then when you are called up, you just address the Commissioner. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce the Commissioner of the Indiana Department of Revenue, Adam Krupp.
Good morning. Oh, thank you.[42.36][42.36](laughter) Didn't expect that. All right, good morning. So, as Emily said, my name is Adam Krupp, Commissioner of Indiana's Department of Revenue. And thank you all for joining us this morning. Before I go into prepared remarks, I want to introduce the folks that are sitting next to me here at the table. We've heard from Emily, who is the Director of our Communications. Seated next to Emily is Kevin Gully, who's our Chief Information Officer. To my left is Bob Grennis, our Chief Operating Officer. To my right, Ed Vance, Chief Financial Officer for the Department of Revenue. And then we have Tammy Jones, who is the Director of our Taxpayer Advocate Office. And down at the end, we have Monique Young-Wash, who is the Executive Director of our Customer Service operation. So, the founder of the Josephson Institute of Ethics in California is often quoted as saying the following: "Take pride in how far you've come; have faith in how far you can go; but don't forget to enjoy the journey." At Indiana's Department of Revenue, we have nearly 700 Hoosiers serving the great state of Indiana, and over the past year, we have been striving to adhere to those principles. I sat here one year ago, just five months into the job, honored and excited about the opportunities and challenges facing this agency, both in the short term and the long term, knowing we were on the cusp of tremendous change, anxious to see how 700 Hoosiers would handle such an amount of change. The results have been promising. We're proud of the work we've done and the improvements to the agency thus far, but know that we fully recognize and are aware that there is much more to do. Last year, I also had the opportunity to lay out my top priorities as Commissioner for the department, and there were five. It's purely coincidence that all five start with the letter C, the first being customer service, the second being culture, followed by compliance, collaboration, and continuous improvement. These priorities drive every decision we make at the department, everything from personnel decisions to whether or not we're going to spend taxpayer dollars on a system enhancement. Today, I'd like to share with the public some of the ways in which we have put those priorities into action. Let's start with customer service. At a very basic level, we've made a couple of subtle but impactful changes. For example, the department formerly known as Tax Administration has been rebranded as Customer Service, such that all tax analysts are now Customer Service Representatives. This change necessarily brings with it a change in one's mindset and behaviors. It connects us in a more meaningful way with our customers, the taxpaying citizens of Indiana and beyond, in many cases. It also serves as a daily reminder of our purpose, driven by Governor Holcomb, when he stated that our purpose is to provide great government service at a great value to Hoosiers. We recognize that people aren't purchasing goods or services from the department, such that the term "customer" might not be the most natural fit for the relationship we share with those we serve, but there is a heightened level of care and concern that comes with the customer relationship. The department's customer service operation was reorganized statewide to ensure a cohesive and aligned team throughout our 11 district offices, as well as central office here in Indianapolis, one that delivers a consistent and high-quality walk-in, phone, email, and correspondence experience. With the goal of delivering best-in-class customer service, there's new staffing, new training, new technology, expanded hours, and new processing procedures that have all paid significant dividends thus far. I speak on behalf of the entire executive team and the agency at large when I say simply that there is a new energy at the department, and the real beneficiaries of that energy are those we serve. So, how do we do? Let's take a look at 2018, in particular, tax season. Thus far, we processed 3.15 million individual income tax returns, 2 million of which generated a refund, and another 141,000 corporate tax returns. Now, speaking of refunds, 92% of electronically filed individual tax returns resulting in a refund to a Hoosier were processed within 14 days. That's up from 84% in 2017. The average turnaround time for a refund from the department is currently 10.7 days. That compares to 14.5 days in 2017. I assure you, that's pretty much the best we can do. As other states and revenue agencies around the country share their information and their data with respect to turnaround times, I assure you, Indiana is near or at the top, and anything faster than that, we would sort of put at risk all of the work we do to ensure identity protection and prevent fraud along the way. Hoosiers continue to file electronically in record numbers, with nearly 90% of individual income tax returns filed electronically this year, with the remainder of those filed via paper. We understand, though, that many Hoosiers still want to file via paper, and in some cases, don't have the means to do otherwise, so we will always respect and accommodate that option. Indiana Free File, which allows Hoosiers with a lower adjusted gross income to file federal and state taxes for free, continues to see growth. This year, 85,743 customers took advantage of the option to file through Indiana Free File, compared to 80,839 in 2017, so that represents a 5.7% increase year over year. Behind me, you'll see we developed a new poster to promote the Indiana Free File program this year. We provided those posters to other agencies, including FSSA, to feature prominently in their facilities and offices around the state that cater to lower-income Hoosiers. We have plans to continue pushing the program to the extent possible next year, more than ever, all throughout 2019, to assure those who qualify know they can file their taxes for free through Indiana Free File. But before we move on from customer service, I just want to make sure that I recognize that we do make mistakes from time to time, and that's always going to be the case. In some cases, it's customer error, we're missing documentation, or the right information has not been provided. But on the other hand, there are occasions where it is completely our fault, and we recognize that every single day. We will never be perfect, no operation can or will be when there is always that element of human error inserted into the process. But what's most important in my eyes, and that I ask from the public, is how we address the mistakes. How much time does it take to resolve the issue? Do we do so with proper care and tone? I ask that we be evaluated and held accountable for how we resolve our issues or address mistakes, more so than whether a mistake is made or by whom. Of all the agencies and state government, of which this is now my third, the department handles some of the most complex transactions and encounters some of the most complicated factual situations on the spectrum, and I do appreciate Hoosiers' patience as we navigate this high degree of difficulty on a daily basis. Let's talk briefly about culture and then compliance. Workplace culture has a direct impact on employee health and also the performance of any organization. We've invested a significant amount of sweat equity, if you will, over the past year towards building a healthy workplace, one with the ultimate vision of being recognized universally as a great place to work. If you're an avid social media user, you have undoubtedly noticed some of the changes in the past year, as we continue to shed the "typical government employee label" that often comes with preconceived notions of the level of care, concern, or work ethic that goes into the job. We are challenging every member of the department to be a proud public servant, one who cares deeply about our mission, embraces the enormous responsibility of delivering great government service, while also recognizing the consequences of failure. We are cultivating a "serve hard, play hard" culture that is designed to attract the next generation of talent, while retaining those who already serve Indiana proudly. In terms of compliance, we continue to emphasize and reinforce a culture of compliance throughout the organization, holding ourselves to the highest standards when it comes to compliance with Indiana laws, as well as department policies and procedures. As we prepare to become a modernized environment, the prudent thing is to make sure that we have current, accurate, and defensible positions when it comes to our business requirements and rules that we load into the new system, and that's exactly what we've been doing for the past year. Next, with respect to collaboration, the next agency priority, an agency's reputation throughout the state and the communities it serves is critical. The Department of Revenue must be respected, trusted, and reliable. Mistakes of the past can linger on for years, and perception becomes reality if you don't do anything about it. Decisions are made every day at the Department of Revenue, many that impact millions of people statewide, or simply select groups of individuals who rely on us for services every day. To the extent possible, it's important to bring those impacted to the discussion to have a seat at the table. So, earlier this year, we launched the first Commissioners Tax Advisory Council. Personally, I appointed 12 individuals from throughout the state of Indiana, as well as two individuals outside the state of Indiana, and these folks range from tax practitioners to attorneys to advocates just interested in good policy and accountability for the Department of Revenue. It's an opportunity for us to provide a behind-the-scenes look at the daily operations of the agency, also to share information about services that we offer and programs we are considering, and to bounce ideas off of a group of subject matter experts. But most importantly, it's an opportunity for us to listen. Additionally, the department's made a concerted effort in the past year to cultivate a positive relationship with the Indiana CPA Society. We have a standing commitment to send multiple department representatives to each meeting of the society's Tax Resource Advisory Council to listen and answer questions presented to the department. In doing so, we also provide updates on key programs, administrative changes, any updates to tax forms that the practitioner community would need to know about, and we keep the society informed about the status of our IT system overhaul. This forum provided an opportunity last year for the CPA Society to present some desired changes to the department. I'd like to take a moment to address one in particular because it impacted numerous people throughout the state, including the practitioner community. A request was made to decrease the time it took the department to certify software vendors, so that CPAs and tax practitioners could file federal and state returns simultaneously, as opposed to filing federal returns on behalf of their clients and then waiting four to six weeks, sometimes longer, to be able to file returns with the department. The desired timeframe presented was that the department should be ready to accept returns by January 15th, but no later than January 31st. This was a standard never met by the department before, but just because it hadn't been done before does not mean that it wasn't possible. So, we took on the challenge to be ready that early. In fact, I think we did a little better than that, as we certified vendors and were ready to accept electronic returns by January 8th, before the IRS opened its gateway. Lastly, talking about agency priorities is continuous improvement. There are a host of items to highlight, but many of which will be featured in our annual report, which is due to the Governor and the Legislative Council by October 1st of each year, so for now, I'd just like to touch upon some major initiatives. It was suggested to me multiple times and in multiple forums that the department's policy surrounding payment plans was too strict and inflexible. Simply put, folks were right. It's important to us that Hoosiers fulfill their legal obligations for tax liabilities, but there's no denying that many individuals end up unable to do so for a variety of reasons, some of which are simply outside their control. After consulting with the Advisory Council, our Taxpayer Advocate Office, and practitioners throughout the state, we eliminated the requirement of 20% of the outstanding liability to be paid upfront as part of any payment plan, and we expanded the timeframe from what was previously up to 24 months to pay off the debt to up to 36 months as a benchmark, with the ability to extend beyond 36 months on a case-by-case basis. Rather than turn people away because they are unable to meet their obligations and don't have the means to make an arbitrary down payment, we want to promote compliance while providing an avenue to allow Hoosiers to get back in good standing with the state of Indiana.[886.67][886.67](coughs) Excuse me. In the spirit of continuous improvement, and even though Indiana's Department of Revenue is recognized as the nation's leader in preventing fraud and identity theft through tax returns, this year alone, we stopped $4 million from getting into the hands of criminals. We took a hard look at the quiz letters that go out each year and are sent to individual filers to confirm their identities throughout tax season. There was a lot of confusion around these letters since they began landing in mailboxes a few years ago, some concerned that the net was cast too wide in terms of who was caught up in the need to verify their identity. So, we decided to do a couple of things. First, start to educate the public about why these letters exist and why they might be receiving this correspondence from the Department of Revenue. The last thing we want, and the worst thing someone can do, is simply throw that piece of correspondence away because they see Department of Revenue on the envelope. Second, we wanted to reduce the overall number of letters without losing any confidence in our fraud analytics and prevention methods. So, as a result, we were able to successfully reduce the number of ID quiz letters from 247,000 in 2017 to 120,000 this year. Few more items to address before we wrap up. Our administrative protest process was a frequent recipient of criticism from the practitioner community and the taxpayer base here in Indiana. So, we conducted roundtables, listening sessions, drafted, and then implemented a new model that has proven to be more efficient, in large part due to the fact that it's now measured through data and metrics on an everyday basis. It is now transparent and predictable to all parties involved in a taxpayer protest. We also created a completely new training program for our customer service team called the JET Program, which is short for Job Expertise Training. It now consists of a multi-week classroom experience to better position new hires for the work that they will perform. We also partnered with Indiana Secretary of State's Office on an initiative to introduce GIS mapping for business registrations through InBiz, as well as our own system, to ensure proper registrations for food and beverage taxes, which means that the correct local units of government are receiving those tax distributions. Now, we can geolocate the precise physical locations of those businesses to determine the proper taxing units, instead of the previous method, which asked the business owner when they registered to self-select which taxing jurisdiction they were a part of. Finally, I'd like to discuss the modernization project that has been mentioned often lately. Last year, at this very forum, we previewed the public procurement process that was about to begin, whereby the department would ultimately enter into a contract with a selected partner from the private sector to develop and implement a new integrated tax system to replace the department's legacy system of nearly 25 years. I described it at that time as a once-in-a-generation overhaul of our IT system. We still feel that way today. Earlier this year, Fast Enterprises was selected to be our partner. They will implement our new system, and Fast is a significant leader in the revenue administration market, having successfully implemented their proprietary software in 26 states around the country, as well as many other locations around the world. We've conducted extensive due diligence. We have visited other states to make sure the implementation of the Fast software has been successful. We've assembled best practices and lessons learned throughout the implementation process, and we have verified that Indiana's Department of Revenue is about to implement what is truly best-in-class for tax administration. Over the next four years, the department will completely modernize and offer new electronic features for filers of all tax types. At a high level, benefits will include extended functionality for an online customer portal, which will allow Hoosiers to view past payments and returns, electronic filing of all corporate returns, some of which today are still submitted on paper, the ability to file amended returns electronically, and validation and transparency of revenue disbursements and reporting to local units of government, just to name a few. The implementation, which comes at a price tag of $60 million, not including post-implementation support and maintenance for the years that follow, will occur in four phases, the first of which is scheduled to go into production during the fall of 2019. It will completely transform the way Indiana Department of Revenue employees conduct their business on a daily basis. It will also transform the way Hoosiers interact with us. So, we certainly have our work cut out for us, but we're already planning how best to inform the public about the various changes and the new features that will come with each particular phase throughout the process of this implementation. So, I want to thank you for your attention. That concludes the prepared remarks that I had today. At this time, I'll turn it back over to Emily to open it up for comment from members of the audience.
Philip Jackson from the Indiana CPA Society is up first.
Is that better? Okay. Good morning, Commissioner Krupp and DOR team members. Thank you for the opportunity to provide these comments today. My name is Philip Jackson, CPA and Chair of the Indiana CPA Society's Tax Resource Advisory Council. As you know, but for others' benefits, as the most trusted business resource and advocate in Indiana, the society works closely with the department to identify and resolve systemic issues and potential areas for administrative improvements for Indiana taxpayers. Let me begin with the acknowledgement and thank you to you and your team, who have worked hard to implement a focus on providing exceptional customer service to taxpayers and their representatives. You committed at the beginning of your administration to deliver best-in-class customer service for the department, and you have worked diligently to achieve that. As one member put it, "I've been impressed with the entire DOR operation and communications since Commissioner Krupp was appointed by Governor Holcomb." The executive team is tremendously responsive, communicative, and seems to have genuine desire for growth and improvement. Not that they weren't before, but it's a new level. We appreciate our elected leader's financial support and the progress being made on the Integrated Tax System Modernization Project. We encourage you to maximize end-user input as much as possible in the development phases. Enhancing certain functions, such as following examples, will be key to the ITS modernization success. One, enhanced online payment history information to include payment date and tax period. Two, enhanced functionality of the MEF submission to accept all PDF attachments, which would eliminate problematic issues when filing net operating loss schedules, or NOL schedules, as they're also referred to, and other forms not supported by the current system. Expedite the processing of power-of-attorney forms from practitioners and provide practitioners with POAs with all notices and communications to taxpayer clients simultaneous to taxpayer notification. Our members and the businesses they represent certainly recognize the improvements to the software vendor approval process and communications to stakeholders to achieve acceptance of corporate online filings in advanced tax season. This has been a long time coming, and we would be remiss if we didn't express our appreciation. As far as areas to approve on, we'll continue to work with you and DOR to address members' issues of concern related to notices to taxpayers, such as requesting additional information that may be viewed as excessive, inadequate explanation of document request, timing of notices during tax season, credit denials lacking specific explanation for denial, mailing of estimated payment vouchers causing confusion for both taxpayers and their representatives. It was just over a year ago that you committed to forming a working group to improve administration of the research and development credit for Indiana businesses. Since that time, the department has drafted a handbook and summary sheet for stakeholders and staff, provided training for auditors, legal and policy staff, worked with IRS to mirror federal compliance, discussed outreach initiatives, and is holding monthly meetings to have in-depth discussions about five areas of concern identified by the working group. We look forward to these and other stakeholder conversations, which no doubt led, in part, to the Indiana Department of Revenue recently receiving an A- and being recognized nationally for having the best sales tax practices amongst all states by the Council of State Taxation. As a member of the Commissioners Tax Advisory Council formed in December, I can state firsthand that the discussions have been very productive. I am sure they will lead to innovative ways to service and provide transparency, fairness, and simplification to Indiana's taxpayers. I close in saying thank you on behalf of our nearly 8,000 members, CPAs who work in public practice, business and industry, government, and education. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip.
Okay, Mark Dutton from Dutton Legal Group.
Good morning. Okay. Yeah, so, I'm an attorney at Dutton Legal Group. We predominantly represent delinquent taxpayers, so everything that I do is sort of viewed through that lens. My number-one recommendation and request would be to, for the department, to post its procedures for doing business online, which would increase transparency and help with consistency of results across similarly situated taxpayers who get different results. It would also help practitioners know exactly the rules of the game, so that everybody would know proper expectations. That's my biggest recommendation. A recurring ACH debit for payment plans would make things a lot easier for my taxpayers and would ensure that you would get your money. A checkbox on retail sales and withholding vouchers, just saying "final," sort of mirroring IRS payroll tax returns, would help significantly, so that when taxpayers are done with withholding or collecting retail sales, they don't have to file an additional form with you that they don't know that they're supposed to file your business closure form. I mirror the Indiana CPA Society's request for carbon copies of letters that go out to taxpayers many times. IRS sends out carbon copies of letters, and so our clients think that we're getting letters from Indiana when they're getting them, and I repeat to them that we do not. I appreciate this opportunity and look forward to your continued improvement.
Thanks, Philip.
Patrick Thomas from the Notre Dame Tax Clinic.
Thanks for this opportunity to speak with you all today. I'm Patrick Thomas. I'm, most of you all know me, but for those who don't, I'm the Director of the Notre Dame Tax Clinic and Professor of the Practice at the Notre Dame Law School. And I've been practicing in low-income tax controversy work for the better part of five years now, in various capacities throughout the state of Indiana. And in the first four years of my practice, it was a truism that our Indiana Department of Revenue cases were always more difficult than our cases with the Internal Revenue Service, despite all of their, you know, bad press. But in the past half-year, three-quarters of a year, really since I spoke at this hearing last year, things have really improved, and I mean that sincerely. Last year, I and other representatives of low-income taxpayer clinics in the state stood before you and spoke about some of the really tragic stories that our clients had in their interactions with the department. You thoughtfully listened and sincerely considered our stories and our recommendations for change, and I sincerely appreciate the work you've done over the past year, in particular, your engagement with us. I think that's been the most fundamental transformation of my practice since I've been a tax attorney. But as you noted, there's always room for improvement, right? Continuous improvement. And so, to that end, the directors of the low-income taxpayer clinics in Indiana, myself, Frank DePietrio from Indiana Legal Services, and DeeDee Gowen from the Neighborhood Christian Legal Clinic, have submitted, in conjunction with this hearing, a report on the state of Indiana tax administration for low-income Hoosiers in 2018. And this report proceeds in three parts. First, it sets forth the case for considering the needs and special characteristics of low-income taxpayers in tax administration in the state. Forty percent of Hoosier taxpayers earn incomes below 250% of the federal poverty guidelines. It's $30,000 for a household of one. One in five Hoosiers earn income below 125%. One in five Hoosiers earn income below 125%, $15,000 a year. Yet, for those of us with some tax knowledge, we know that those folks still likely have Indiana income tax filing obligations, so they're interfacing with you, or a large majority are. Low-income taxpayers also have special circumstances, often that will drive them into poverty or the poverty causes these special circumstances, like disability status, limited education, speaking English as a second, third, or fourth language. And the department needs to consider the special characteristics of these taxpayers, as well as the general fact that when you're poor, it's hard to pay a $1,000 tax bill, you know, plus the penalties and collection fees and collection fee. So that's the first part. The second part that we've heard a lot about today is, again, acknowledging the progress the department's made in 2017 and 2018 in engaging with us, engaging with Hoosier taxpayers writ large, and making a lot of really profound changes for tax administration in the state. And I'll just emphasize again how much I do appreciate that progress. The third and final, and really substantive, part of the report identifies the ten, what we've identified as the ten most serious tax issues in Indiana tax administration. And these are grounded upon three principles. First, fair tax collection procedures. Second, accurate tax assessments. And third, a goal I know we all share, is quality customer service. These principles, they form the foundation for quality tax administration in this or any state. I want to quote for a second from the National Taxpayer Advocate Nina Olson from her 2017 annual report to Congress. She notes somewhere that the IRS, and I think too, Indiana, has to acknowledge what the private sector clearly knows. If you don't serve customers in the way they want and need to be served, they're going to look somewhere else. Now, for the IRS, they have nowhere else to look. But for Indiana, well, they have 50 other jurisdictions, or 49 other jurisdictions to look at. But for those who can't, you know, get out of Dodge if the tax administration is too bad, they do have, as the National Taxpayer Advocate identifies, another option to go to, and you have another competitor, and that is noncompliance, the lure of noncompliance. She goes on, "If the IRS isn't going to provide you the assistance you need in the manner you need it, why bother complying with tax laws?" Yes, taxpayers may know that there may be consequences for blatant noncompliance, but if and when the opportunity presents itself for someone not to comply in subtle ways that are hard to detect, like reporting income from the cash economy, the taxpayer may be more likely to take that opportunity. After all, there's no brand loyalty to the IRS, to compliance, or to the Department of Revenue, except, of course, its excellent employees. So that really lies at the heart of these principles we've identified and why we think it's so important to look at these issues as we move forward in 2018 and as you look beyond that to modernization. I do want to just hit on a couple of specific recommendations and issues we've identified. I will not go through them all mercifully, though I think I'm the last to speak, so. So first, regarding fair tax collection procedures. So certainly, one that I won't discuss, but is the issue of accounting for tax payments. And I know that's something we're working on for modernization, but we need to take a look in the interim because four years is going to be a long time to wait to accurately tell a taxpayer, you know, what payments they've made on an account. But the most substantive issue here, for me and my practice, has been our, and there's going to be a but here, so wait for it, but our interactions with the taxpayer advocate office. The but is that the employees of the taxpayer advocate office are some of the most dedicated government employees I've ever worked with in my practice, and it's truly a pleasure to work with them on a, really, a daily basis. So I don't begrudge them at all personally. So the issue, though, that we've identified, and I think a lot of other practitioners have identified, is twofold. First, as I think I heard a gentleman mention earlier in perhaps this context, perhaps another, that there are very minimal published guidelines on just how the department evaluates applications for hardship payment plans and offers in compromise. I tell my clients, when they come in with large tax debts from the IRS and from the state, I say, "Okay, we know what we're going to get most likely from the IRS, so I can advise you as to that." But as for Indiana, it's really a black box. I can give them your information, but I don't know what's going to come out. And so that's something I think that in the next year, the department ought to take a look at. And in conjunction with that is a second issue, that of proving a taxpayer's financial hardship. So how do you prove a hardship? How do you prove someone's poor? You prove they have minimal income, or at least that their expenses exceed their income and they don't have much in the way of assets. But how do you do that, right? How do you do that effectively? The IRS uses what are called national and local collection standards, because if you think about it, it's really hard to prove how much you spent in the last month on groceries or gas or clothing, or at least, I don't know it off the top of my head. Commissioner, do you know what you spent in the last month on groceries?
I do.
Okay. Well, but presumably, we might be able to look at our credit card receipts and piece things together. A lot of my clients, though, don't operate that way. They work in the cash economy, and so they don't have these records. And sometimes, the department requires submission of receipts for these things. You know, that's really difficult when someone comes in my office and I say, "Well, you might be able to qualify for this, but, you know, we need you to start getting receipts for three months, and we need to wait to submit anything until that time." It's changed a little bit. Now, we can, we have a relationship with the department where we can, I can just pick up the phone and say, "Help. Please, you know, stop this levy while we gather this information." But ordinary taxpayers may not have that relationship, and so I think that proves a challenge for them and still for us to some degree. So in some, looking at changing the proof requirements, looking at changing them to incorporate perhaps a national standard expense or a local expense, where we can just say, you know, for a household of one, we're going to presume that you're spending $650 a month on food, clothing, personal expenses, and other things that are necessary for someone to live, but that are really difficult to account for. That would be my recommendation. And then, once you adopt some guideline like that, publish it. Publish it online so that practitioners know what's going on, what we can get for our clients, and so taxpayers know as well. So that's one issue. The second issue I'll address has to do with accurate tax assessments, and that's the issue of withholding on Form W-2. The clients I work with have often had some catastrophic life event that is awful on its own terms, but also causes noncompliance with tax law, whether it's a nasty divorce, losing their job, losing their house, pulling a bunch of money out of a 401K to fix that situation, and then some bad thing happens with the IRS or Indiana, and they go hide under a rock for five years. Well, they finally come out from their rock, they're ready to comply and get on with their lives, and they come to me, and we say, "Okay, we need to file tax returns for the past five years to get into compliance with the IRS and the state." But we don't have W-2s from the employer. The employer is maybe closed up, or we have a bad relationship now with our employer. We just can't talk to them. So we can't get those W-2s. We don't know what the withholding is. And so it's really hard for us to create a tax return that they can sign under penalties of perjury to say, "This is, to the best of my knowledge, an honest and accurate tax return," because we know there's been some withholding there that they should get credit for. Some practitioners choose to estimate withholdings and file returns, but my understanding from them is that the department simply responds with a math error notice saying, "Oops, we think you got your withholding wrong there because you didn't include that W-2, so we're going to give you a zero, and, well, you owe us all that tax now again." So that doesn't strike me as a very fair process. Ought to be a proposed assessment instead. But we see the same issue with BIA assessments, even where, in some instances, the department possesses the withholding data or some other entity in state government possesses the withholding data. That seems to me to be a simple fix, at least for those BIA assessments to say, "Okay, let's look at the data we have. Let's credit the taxpayer with that, and then, well, if that means they don't owe additional tax, let's not issue that BIA assessment," because what happens after it's issued? They owe a tax, they freak out. Eventually, it leads to a levy from premier credit, and that's what, you know, gets them in my door. We work it out, figure out, "Oh, you likely don't actually owe." And at the end of the day, even if we're able to find the W-2, the department's having to refund money because the person never owed. And so that's not a very efficient process, it strikes me. And there are other permutations of this issue, but it's one I think the department really needs to look strongly at in 2018, and hopefully, moving forward beyond that modernization will be helpful to this problem as well. And I'll just hit one more issue, if you permit me. Rule of threes, right? And that's an issue with proposed assessments themselves, also dealing with this theme of accurate tax assessments. So this is an issue I talked about last year, and there were some changes made to the proposed assessment letter that were welcome. For one, the letter now points taxpayers to a web address with a protest guide and all of the instructions for accurately and timely filling out that protest, and I really do appreciate that. That doesn't help so much those taxpayers without access to Internet or the facilities to use Internet, so may want to look at other ways to link them up with the process for protesting a liability. The other change I'll mention was that you now include the date on which they must file a protest, which, instead of just saying 60 days, which I definitely appreciate that as well. One major problem, though, is that the language of the letter still looks like a bill, still looks like they owe the tax and they owe it now. There are multiple references to, quote, "amount you owe," "your bill," "debt," and "tax due." There are two references to "tax due." And it's not due when you get the proposed assessment, we know. We have 60 days to file a protest. Can't collect on it. You can't assess the tax in that time. So this belief is not entirely unreasonable from my clients, who might, you know, freak out and pay that bill. I have that happen for about 10% of my clients. If the balance is low enough, oh, my gosh, let's keep the IRS or Indiana at bay. But they may not actually owe it. And that links up with the issue I heard mentioned earlier about copying correspondence on practitioners, especially these proposed assessment notices. I would also suggest that, I would suggest this, I don't know if you'll follow through on it, but I would just suggest, in closing, a protest submission form in every proposed assessment. That would signal to the taxpayers that this is not yet a tax that is due. I know there is a printing and paper cost to that, but we want to also look at the backend costs of inaccurate tax assessments, the human resources they take, the financial resources they take, and compare those to what that extra cost might be. And finally, a humble suggestion to conclude, you know, a lot of these issues that we encounter, we could have prevented had we been there to talk to the taxpayer in the first place. I would strongly encourage the department, for appropriate taxpayers, to include a list of the low-income taxpayer clinics in Indiana on proposed assessments and on-demand notices. We represent clients without cost. They do have to have a federal tax controversy for us to formally represent them, but at the very least, we can consult with these taxpayers about what this notice means and what they ought to do in response to it. And I am truly saying that half the time, it's just an issue of communication and understanding and bridging that gap between the tax-paying public and the department, and we can really assist in doing just that. And I don't mean to take any fees away from my friends in the private bar. We're limited to representing folks below 250% of federal poverty who often don't have the funds to pay an attorney or CPA. So I'll just conclude by thanking you again for allowing me to offer these comments, for being an incredible partner over the past year and demonstrably improving Indiana tax administration for all Hoosiers. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick.
Frank DePietro with Indiana Legal Services.
So I promise I'll be much more brief than Patrick. Commissioner, when I was first hired as the LITC Director at Indiana Legal Services a year ago, I heard a lot of negative feedback regarding the Indiana Department of Revenue. And while there've been some struggles, my overall experience working with the Department over the past little ones has really been quite encouraging. The Taxpayer Advocate Office, Tammy's people, April McManus, I'd like to give her a really good shout-out, has become an irreplaceable tool in quickly resolving cases where taxpayers are experiencing economic hardship. We have closely worked with them, we've collaborated with them. They've actually referred us people where we've been able to help them when they couldn't. That's been a really great thing. Also, the district offices are invaluable resource that allows us to identify issues and solve problems quickly. Please don't close the district offices. The IRS is doing that, and what we were able to accomplish with them is tremendous. Bloomington, I go there usually about two, three times a week, my staff goes there. We're able to figure things out, especially with the modernization system. We can get a liability spreadsheet quickly from them. I show up with a POA and it's done. And lastly, the creation of the Commissioner's Advisory Council provides a meaningful exchange of ideas between practitioners and the department that has helped foster constructive changes in departmental policy. We've seen that with the payment plans. We've actually taken advantage of them. I can say four or five of my clients are now in payment plans that would not have been last year. So that is a really good, meaningful change. The relationships of the LITCs of Indiana now have the department is one of collaboration versus previously, an adversarial one. From what I heard, you had to fight with the department. I don't believe that now. The department, its leadership team and commissioner should be commended for the strides you guys have made over the past year. But as, again, you said and we've heard, there's still much work to be done. The LITCs of Indiana, Neighborhood Christian Legal Clinic, University of Notre Dame, and Indiana Legal Services submitted a second annual report containing written comments and recommendations to the department. It highlights the struggles not only low-income taxpayers face, but all Hoosiers face in tax administration. We hope the department, as it did last year, will take these comments under careful consideration so it can improve overall tax administration and promote fair tax collection practices. In short, these recommendations will only help the Department of Revenue serve Indiana by administering tax laws in a fair, secure, and efficient manner. Indiana Legal Services, University of Notre Dame, and the Neighborhood Christian Legal Clinic look forward to discussing this report with you and working with the department. look forward to discussing this report with you and working with the department over the next 12 months. We hope to continue to make positive change. Thank you again for your time.
Thanks, Frank. And since you brought it up, I will go ahead and address, just to confirm, we have no plans to close any district offices. They are a vital piece of our operation. We understand the importance and the value that they bring, especially in the local communities, whereas, you know, so much happens in Indianapolis. They're just a great part of our team, and we consider them a member of our family. And again, no plans whatsoever to close any district office.
Just yesterday, I spent time in there, and there was a gentleman who, it was, he called it a photo static copy of his tax return. And the district office went through line by line, said, "We understand why your return got rejected." And not only that, he had accidentally requested his refund to go to some organization. I mean, I wasn't listening too much, and they changed it so he would get his refund. I mean, that you cannot do with the IRS. So the fact that the district offices are there and the work that they do should be commended, and thank you for keeping them open.
Okay, at this time, we have no other speakers, but we have two emails that were sent in to us, so I'm going to read those real quick. My comment for the annual report, this is from Tim. My comment for the annual public hearing is related to online tax payments. I had a client who made an estimated tax payment online. The business routing number was entered, but a personal checking account number was entered by mistake, so the payment was rejected. The client was charged a return check penalty of 25% of the tax payment for this online payment rejection. This penalty was large since the tax payment was significant. This is a huge deterrent for encouraging people to pay online if they have charged an enormous penalty for what is considered a typo in the system. It had nothing to do with not having money in the checking account. Online payments would seem to cut down significantly on manual labor for the department. I think the penalty should be eliminated altogether, or at least reduced significantly, or charge a smaller flat fee, not an amount based on the amount of the tax payment. And the last comment, checking taxpayer payment amounts. It would be helpful if DOR could list more than just amounts. That would be list amounts, dates received, and which taxpayer the DOR has applied the payments. It would also be helpful if the department could list payments going back several years. Having all this information online could possibly save time wasted waiting for an agent on the telephone. As a preparer, this kind of information can be especially helpful with new clients or those that could be more than one year in arrears. That's from Andrew. At this point, does anyone else have any other comment, questions? This concludes our annual public hearing. Thank you for attending, everybody.